All right, good evening, everyone. Show the time is six thirty-three, April eighteenth, twenty-three. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. Roll call, all council members are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nathan, will you press what's first?
Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for another day and a beautiful day at that. But we thank you for just the warmer weather that is down here, or just an opportunity outside, and we're thanking you for that. We thank you for what we got to celebrate just a few weeks ago with Easter and all that that brings with it. And, Lord, we pray that you just give us wisdom and guidance here tonight. Or you'd help us to make the decisions that would most benefit our citizens here in Social Circle and the community at large. And so, Lord above you, we ask that you be with us in this evening, pray.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Okay, I have a few announcements of upcoming meetings. Municipal Court, April nineteenth, one P. M. in the community room. Planning Commission meets April the twenty-fifth at six P. M. in the community room. Tree Board Meeting, April the twenty-seventh, six P. M. All of these meetings are in the community room. Our next council work session, May fourth, six thirty P. M. Main Street Commission Meeting, May ninth, eight A. M. Historic Preservation Meeting, May ninth, six P. M. And our next council meeting, May sixteen, at six thirty P. M. All right, moving into our agenda. We have presentations to this afternoon, this evening. Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have this Lauren with us. She's going to tell us a little bit about what's going on.
Hello, hello, thanks for having us. You know, we come here every April, so probably not very surprising to y'all that we're here, but we're glad to be here. So I'm here to represent a Child Boys Child Advocacy Center. We're a nonprofit located right down the street. I know some of y'all have been there before, some of you pretty recently, for our pinwheel celebration this April. But we're a local nonprofit that provides services as part of ongoing investigations into cases of child abuse. So our staff, including Jennifer, who's here with me, interview the child, get all the information and details of the case, hopefully in a one-time interview in a really child-friendly, trauma-sensitive, but also legally sound way, so the child's able to tell their story at our center less times. And that reduces trauma, so that the child doesn't have to relive that experience again and again and again. We also do medical exams with a forensic nurse practitioner who's on staff with us at our facility, and then a lot of family support services. But we're here today, which you'll hear in the proclamation that the mayor will read, for Child Abuse Prevention Month, because we also know that children can be protected from abuse, and that's our ultimate goal. We want to be able to serve them when there are instances, and we know that child abuse happens often. But we also know that strong communities help protect children, and we're in a strong community here, so we're excited to celebrate that today. I did just want to do real quick some stats. You have a folder of information in front of you. But in two thousand and twenty-two, we saw about two hundred and seventy kids. We track everything by jurisdiction, law enforcement jurisdiction. So we serve Walton and Newton Counties. We saw ten cases with the Social Circle Police Department. But then we also saw more cases of kids from Social Circle through the Walton County Sheriff's Office, just depending on, you know, who was available and how the jurisdiction worked out. And then we did twenty-six medicals for Walton County. And this year, we're already on track to see more kids than last year. Again, we don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. That doesn't necessarily mean more kids are experiencing abuse. It means more kids are being identified and getting help. So when we're busy, that's positive for us. But again, this month is all about Child Abuse Prevention Month. You've probably seen our pinwheel displays. We have one at the library, which we're really excited about. We did that event and then did a storytime for the kids, which was really fun. We had about fifteen kids there, and then we did the one at our office as well. So I want to thank y'all for your time. If you haven't been by our facility, we would love for you to come by and see it. I think it helps you understand a little more how the process works. My business card's in there. It's got a direct phone number for me. I'd love to answer any questions or talk to you more. But mostly, thank y'all so much for the ways you support our city and our agency. We're very glad to be here in Social Circle.
Thank you, Lauren. As you said, I do have a proclamation to read, so we'll proceed with that. It reads, "By the mayor of the City of Social Circle, Georgia, a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are our most valuable resource, and they're also our most vulnerable, all of Georgia's children have a right to be safe, an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow in an environment that fosters healthy development, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Georgia's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment and providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas strong and nurturing communities, where all children grow up safe, people have jobs, and provide for those they love, and families receive the care they deserve, strengthen families and promote child, family, and community well-being, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created within communities among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business sector. And by providing a safe, stable, and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Georgia's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore, I, David Keener, Mayor of the City of Social Circle in the state of Georgia, to hereby proclaim April two thousand and twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Social Circle, Georgia. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Social Circle, Georgia, this eighteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-three."
Thank you so much.
Lauren, thank you very much. Y'all have to stay. If you, if you need to leave, we understand. Next up, we have employee introduction and recognition.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to introduce you to newest member of the Social Circle Police Department, Officer Kevin Spivey. He's been in law enforcement for approximately eight years, where he started off as a jailer at his previous agency, then proceeded to work his way to the road as a patrol officer. He started with us on April third and is currently in field training. He's young, he's eager, and he's excited to work for Social Circle, and we look forward to some great things coming from Officer Spivey.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
It's just nice to be here. I like to build a relationship better with the community. Nathan knows me well. Started going to church at the Grove. And I just plan on building a better relationship with y'all and hopefully making this my future home and the rest of my career here at Social Circle.
Great, thank you. Welcome to Social Circle. Anyone else? All right, downtown rundown.
Good evening. We've got quite a few things on the rundown for, for tonight. First one is citywide cleanup. Excuse me. The citywide cleanup will take place this Saturday from eight to noon. Participants will meet here outside the community room at eight A. M. for street assignments and supplies. We will have biscuits and coffee provided for the volunteers. And this weekend, dumpsters will also be available at the public works lot from nine to four, Robbie? Eight to four, on Saturday and Sunday for current City of Social Circle utility customers. And then the following weekend, April the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, we will have our historic tour weekend. This will be free guided tours that we're going to do on Saturday and Sunday. So Saturday will be ten, twelve, two, and four. And on Sundays, tours will be at two and four. Participants will meet here at the community room, and they'll be given a map and a booklet before we start the tour. The tour will end in downtown, so we can encourage participants to shop and dine while they're here. And then Friday, May the fifth, we have our Cinco de Mayo Beer Crawl and Concert. It'll be in downtown, and the concert will be, will feature Amy, the Amy Ray Band, and she will be performing at Friendship Park from six to nine. And we will have face painting for the kids and some fun giveaways in the park that night, too. And then last on my list is the citywide yard sale. That will be the weekend of May fifth through the seventh. This is the time of year when people who live in the city can get, can do a yard sale without purchasing a permit. And so we've had great response so far. We already have about fifteen or sixteen participants on the list, and then the deadline to register for that is May the second. So we're looking forward to a good weekend that weekend.
Good. Any questions? Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
All right, no one signed up for any citizens' requests? Do we have any council requests? Hearing none, I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to pull out item three of the consent agenda for some more discussion.
Tell them about the bid award, congrating?
Yeah, I went over there, looked at that area Saturday, and I ain't too sure about it. They gonna be able to do it for that? I just got some questions, some more questions about it.
So you just want to pull it out of consent? Move it to new business? You want to table it to this meeting, or you want to move it to another?
I'll just add a consent agenda and add it to the new business.
Okay.
Or unfinished business.
Okay.
As item one.
All right, we have a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, now is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. There are no public hearings scheduled this evening. That moves us into the consent agenda. If y'all have had an opportunity to review that. Eric, will you go over that for us?
Sure, we have a fairly light consent agenda this evening, with now only three items on the consent agenda. We have amendments to the mayor and council meeting on March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. We have amendments to the mayor and council work session of April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. And we have a bid award for J. J. A. Enterprises, LLC, for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for sewer lateral repair and relocate on Juniper Street, and also authorize the mayor or city manager to execute contract documents. Recommend approval.
Motion from Teresa, second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. No unfinished business?
We have one now.
Oh, is that where you put it, unfinished business? All right. Eric, you want to introduce that for us again?
Yeah, certainly. So it's a bid award for congrating and landscaping in the amount of sixty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars for the Heritage Park, Town Park Drainage Improvement Project. This is an ongoing issue that we've had for quite some time, actually. Couple of years, probably longer. I only know about it for a couple of years.
Twenty eighteen.
Since two thousand and eighteen. We've got water that's coming off of an unfinished city project from Heritage Park that is creating basically a lake that's deep enough and good rains for, for the owner of the house to canoe in the backyard. But then there are two houses in Town Park, directly behind these two houses, that are at a lower elevation. Okay, probably about eight, seven, eight feet or so. And so all the water that's coming from the pond creates waterfalls down into the houses there in Town Park, because the water cannot get into the pipe that's there because it's actually above ground, and water doesn't climb. So it did go out. We've had Jimmy Parker working on this for quite some time. We did go out to bid. We had, we had four, four quotes. The low grader, or the low bid was sixty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, which, as, as Steve would assume he's going to note here, is considerably less than the second low bid. And we did talk about that at our work session. And apparently, the precision planning, Jimmy Parker with precision planning is familiar with this firm, and he bashed for a quote at that amount. Robbie, you have anything else to add on that?
My concern about the whole thing is, is I spent money over there, I know, two times. I think three times.
The same problem?
Same problem. And I've walked over there and looked at the back of those two yards in Heritage Park. We still got a problem there. So if you don't fix it from Heritage Park all the way through, you still gonna have the problem.
It is, it is fixing it from Heritage Park.
That's what I'm saying, but you still, we spent money over there three times. And we took the low bid every time, and the low bid every time, we still got a problem.
Well, I'll comment on what Steve said. Councilmember Boyd and myself both live in Heritage Park. I live closer to the end in the cul-de-sac. Nathan lives further up the street. Both of us are somewhat affected by flooding in there. And this started back, we had a water project over there that ended in December of two thousand and eighteen because of lack of funding. So the previous manager, at that time, never went back to, to the council to get additional funding to complete that project. So we moved on with something else. So basically, it's a, it was an incomplete project. And I'll speak specifically for my house. All, all the water comes down Heritage Park and from the cul-de-sac towards my house to a, to a drop inlet or culvert that sits in my yard. That pipe goes under the road, and on the other side, and, and this is my concern that I, I think I've talked to Robbie about, and I've not seen the plan that Mr. Parker put out. But on the other side, they dug a ditch, basically, to expose the water pipe that goes under the road. And it's, I'm guessing, a twenty-four inch pipe. So you know how deep that pond is over there. When it rains, it literally fills up. And we lovingly call that a mosquito pond over there, because in the summer, that's basically what we have, with that water sitting there for days that doesn't drain. And I personally don't see, without digging a very deep trench across through there, that they're going to drain that water over to Town Park from Heritage Park. Or, or the two yards that Steve references in the back, where there's, I think they're building, they're putting a burn back there, which may help a little, but they're still going to have a large amount of water in most, in this trainer's yard and the swats.
Well, the problem with the whole thing is, is when they done the subdivision, they changed the flow of the water. The flow of the water used to go that way. And they're trying to make it go that way. But if you look at it, it looks to me like the water's running uphill.
It is running uphill. That's the problem, and it can't get into the pipe.
So...
I guess this is...
I just don't like, honestly, we done been bid with low bid. More than once.
So...
We got two fire trucks that we was bid on low bid that we paying for now. We paying more for one of them to keep it running, and what we paying to pay them on? And I just don't like low bid.
So council has two options here. Okay, one is we disable this for another month and really kind of take a step back and really see if they can really do this job for that amount of money. Okay, Jimmy says they can. So, and we do, and we do, and we do enough projects with city engineer that we trust his advice.
So the engineer is telling us what, they have a...
Yes.
What they're supposed to be doing.
Yes, now, but council also has a second option. And council can always reject a low bid and award to the second bidder.
They just too much difference in the price.
Yeah, I will say that our internal estimates, even if you went with the second, it's still less than what we thought it would be.
But that's way less than what it should have been.
Yep. But being, being a public work tissue, though, and, and...
I mean, this is...
The standard is, is to, is to award to the lowest responsible bidder. Right, and so that was the basis of the recommendation.
But this is, this is where I'm at. We've already spent money over there twice to the low bidder, and we still got the problem. We don't need to throw low bid of money at it again and end up spending more, and then be back over again in six months to a year, working on it again. That's where I'm at.
I, I would like to ask the council to table this and give myself an opportunity to meet with Jimmy Parker and Robbie out there and walk the subdivision. I'm not real sure, like Steve's talking about, that they have really looked at that and thought about all the consequences, because there, there are several places coming down Heritage Park that it floods out.
I know that Jimmy has.
Did Jimmy draw up the plans?
Jimmy drew up the plans, okay? So I know that he has done it. I, I think the question here is not what his solution is, it's whether this person, this group can do it for that amount of money. Am I correct?
I went over there and looked Saturday after we had that rain, and there's water standing. I mean, a lot of water.
So, so we have two options here, like I said a while ago. One option is to table it. And we can get Jimmy in here at the next work session and kind of work through it, his recommendation. Or council can throw out the low bid altogether. You know, if that's what your concern is, is whether they're able to do it, Jimmy's plan for the amount of money. Which sounds to me like that's the reason. It's not, it's not a concern, it's not, it's not a concern about the firm in particular or the plan in particular. It's what the bid is.
Because, I mean, you know what's going to happen. They going to change orders to death. And we didn't put, which one, we put a limit on somebody about change orders.
That was on thermobacus.
That was on thermobacus, because of the rock they forgot to put in there. Okay.
So I, I just think that now we have a bid of sixty-something thousand dollars. Like I said, we did talk about it in the work session. The, the next closest was almost double that. So, but then as business, I can't tell him that he can't do it for sixty thousand dollars, because we don't know how many personnel he uses. He might not have the overhead that the company for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that they're calculating in there. So they're saying that they can do this particular job, and our engineer's saying they can do this job for this price. You know, if, if it's written out what they're supposed to be doing, then I, I just don't know throwing it out because of that. I mean, we need to make sure that the job can be done for that.
Yeah, that's, that's what we do.
So if, if we're as a, a city, if you look at it and say, it don't look like it can be done for sixty thousand dollars, then we might need to be throwing it in, because we both see...
Well, I, I'll also note that the, in the agenda packet is the bid award letter from Jimmy Parker, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's not Eric writing the letter. It's not Robbie writing the letter. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it says, "Based on our review of the bids received, it appears that the lowest and best bid is out of congrating in the amount of sixty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents." So again, yeah, that, that's the question. So if you want to be, you know, get a comfort level with Jimmy's knowledge of it...
It's like you said, though, it's like you said just a minute ago, and you told us this at the work session last Thursday, two weeks ago, that it was less, come in way less than what y'all had figured it was going to be.
Yeah, that's unusual, you know, either for other things.
Well, most of the time, what we think it's going to be is more than that.
These days it is, yes.
Well, y'all, that's what I'm saying. So I'm saying that if they come in way less than what we thought, it ain't going to happen for that. And we gonna end up changing orders to death.
I want to know, you all said they been over there several times, right?
Done different companies, they've been over there seven ti- several times.
Was it for the same issue? Something don't sound right. Something like, we don't have a resolution, you know?
I can't, I can't speak to what's, what's been done before. The last time this was worked, almost two thousand and eighteen.
Is the same engineer's been looking at it for all this time?
I don't know who they had looking at it before, but I know...
Engineers now?
No, that engineer's gone.
Okay.
But it could be an engineer problem, the first...
But it, but I'm just saying, it's less than what we had figured. And every project we have doesn't usually come in at what we want. And this is less than half of what we think it should have been?
So, well, this, this number two and three are fairly close.
So the bid prices, all these are sealed bids, right?
They're all sealed bids, yeah.
Well, it's, it's probably going to end up being like the one that we, the guy with the rock. This dude missed something somewhere.
You were going to, when Steve mentioned thermobacus conditions, you were going to say something?
Two things that, that, just listening to all this. One is the city is pretty much legally bound to take the lowest bid absent some good reason to do so. Jimmy, he's done this with the city before. If he doesn't think they're qualified, he said, they're the lowest bid, they're not qualified, throw it out, take this as a second low bid. That's a legitimate excuse. The excuse of, it's too good to be true. It's not really an excuse until we let them do the work. The way around that is you give a contract and you make it a, cannot exceed this sixty thousand dollar number for the work. I think it would be prudent of the city to look at all the bid documents to make sure that they're all bidding on the same thing, which I'm sure Jimmy did, but I think it would be prudent on y'all to...
To double check that and look at that again.
So, because that's a thermobacus situation. They're not bidding on the same thing, because somebody put a penny on something.
Yeah. Sounds to me like, like the best recommendation would be to table this and bring Jimmy in to explain the recommendation.
Yeah, and then maybe put, if we go with it, maybe put something on, in the budget for a couple of change orders or something. But like you said, we might need to compare to make sure that, I mean, because we don't know their overhead, I mean...
Right, we don't, we don't, we don't know, we don't know the basis of the bid.
That's what happened on the first run at this in two thousand and eighteen, when they were doing the work. It was supposed to go on the odd side of the street, and they wound up putting the pipe on the even side of the street and boring under the road for each one of the people on the opposite side, which affected my house. And they basically never put any change orders in and ran out of money.
These are all legitimate concerns. I mean, they really are.
I mean, we brought it up in the work session that...
Yeah, we did, we did. But I'll also, I'll also remind you that, I mean, Jimmy's the closest thing to city engineer that we have, right? And we, we rely on his expertise and advice on a lot of things, particularly when it comes to a lot of our drainage projects. He's been looking at this particular project for about a year and a half now. And...
So how, I guess this is just a question, how much would it cost to get a second engineer to look at it?
Well, you can't do that after you've already gone out to bid. You'd have to throw out all these bids, because an engineer's going to come up with a different solution. There's going to be something different. And not to say that, that the plan that Jimmy drew up is bad.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just trying to...
It's, it's, you know, it's like trying, trying to cook a steak, right? You get two chefs to cook a steak. They're going to, they're going to cook it a little bit different every time. It's going to be the same steak.
My, my whole point of the thing is, is there's so much difference in their prices.
Right.
That if, we've already spent money over there twice, and I think it's three times.
That's true, that's...
And they going to change orders to death.
I mean, we need to...
We gonna end up paying more than what we would have done just to pay somebody a little more and got it done right.
What do, I mean, as far as the fix, what did not, did they not do last time?
I can't answer that.
Different this time?
I cannot answer that. All, all I know is, I've been told that, that the Heritage Park project ran out of money, and they never went back and finished it. That's what I was told.
The retention pond ain't even in Heritage Park. This retention pond is in Town Park.
We're going up, Robbie?
What they did last time, when we ran out of money, that we didn't finish?
I got the plans right here on that.
Last time or this time?
They're doing a swell between the two houses. They're doing a drop inlet, and they're piping it. They're lowering the pipe.
So, yeah, but I want to be clear, the problem's not the plan. The problem is what they're bidding on the plan.
Right.
So, do we know what they suppose, what, what we ran out of money last time?
It was during that water project, is all I know. That it was the other water project I do there.
The moving it to the other side of the street, The moving it to the other side of the street, they just charged more money for that process because they had to bore under the road.
The water problem ain't got nothing to do with all of them. Part of the water problem ain't got nothing to do with that. Part of the water problem is that this is a retention pond, not a detention pond, and it's got it as a detention pond. They trying to hold, it holding waters that are collecting and slowly it run off.
That's right. It's two different.
It's all gonna be piped down there at the end of it. This is the swell between the two houses.
Yep.
And then right here, just before it goes over into Town Park where that, um, pipe is like raised up. That pipe is gonna be that old now. It's not gonna be a big hump in between the two yards in, um, uh, Town Park.
So, so again, so, so again, I say.
Job is more moving dirt and not a lot of material.
Yeah.
Then I mean. And that could explain a lot of the over, the difference of the cost too.
So, so again, I reiterate, it's not the engineering solution. It's what, it's what the bid was. That's what I'm hearing Steve's, um, Steve's complaining about.
So it sounds like they ran out of money and they didn't get a chance to fix it all the way.
We didn't fix it the first time.
Yeah, that's what it's saying.
That's what I was told.
And then there were some remedial measures done by the city of Town Park.
So, so again, we've got, we've got two options here. We just need a direction to go. We, we can table it and have Jimmy come in. And soothe other, soothe, soothe whatever feelings are about what the price is. Or council always has the option to award to the second bid. We have to have a reason for that.
You have to agree. It's gonna get scrutiny, but.
I believe, I, I believe, I believe that. Um, especially with bids two and three, so close together, that the first and fourth bids are outliers. Like extreme outliers. I mean, you gotta range of sixty thousand to four hundred and seventy-one thousand. Right? Whereas the two middle bids are a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty-two. So, so you can throw, you, you can throw it out on hers. Yeah, but I mean, in the letter, Jimmy says, we have worked with Connor Grading and landscaping in past projects and the quality of their work has been very good. And that's your issue. So, that's the recommend, that makes it really hard. Yeah. So I guess the recommendation I would have would say to table this until our work session, bring Jimmy in and get further. Yeah.
Work with them and they're, they can do this. Because like I said, we don't know the overhead. Overhead means a lot when you bid on something.
Well, the rule is, is if he go, if he hold them to this price. And then they don't finish it, they gonna walk away. We right back where we at and we spending money again.
You could get a bond.
Can you, can you write that in the contract not to exceed this price?
Yep, we do it all the time.
We don't have to give money upfront. I mean, the whole dollar amount upfront, right, to go for this project?
We got finished project, yeah.
Let's, let's protect ourselves on, on that.
So we're gonna table it? Yeah, that's what I would say.
Alright.
I'm making a motion to table it.
Thank you.
I'm making a motion to table it.
To what day? To the work session?
Work session. Well, to the next council?
Next council meeting.
We'll talk about it in the work session. But I still ain't comfortable with that big price. I think there should be some way. And the city in the past, let me ask you this question. This ain't got anything to do with this. The city in the past has. Done exactly like what you, Eric was talking about. Has dropped the lowest bidder and dropped the highest bidder and took the ones that were closest together and done. Do you remember that? Would you hear any of that?
So I, I will say what you're talking about, it's not unusual before it becomes up to a council vote. That type of thing does happen. Um, not frequently, but it does. Particularly when you've got the, at this point where the engineer is going in through and comparing the bid documents, uh, versus the price, right? I've seen lots of cases where the engineer will say, I know this firm, they can't do this for that amount. And so therefore we, therefore we throw them out. Yeah, Jimmy's done it. But it just doesn't usually hit the council level, right? Because we usually don't have a letter like this where the city engineer says we're good to go.
But we don't usually have to spend money on a spot three times either. And the way they don't usually, um, they ain't usually that much different to the price.
Well, I'll tell you, it's a lot of water.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of water. And so that solution, or that water's gonna always be there until that pipe is lowered. And there's a swell or there's a ditch dug to get the water directed in that direction.
And really it corrects a problem that we have down in Town Park for those two property owners on either side of that, that swell.
I mean, I mean, that, that's the biggest problem we've got because. I've seen floodwater, I've seen waters over there that were, that were deep enough that basically goes up to their.
To go into their patio.
Back door, because those are all on, on slabs.
Well, so that goes back to the contractor that graded this block wrong, wrong, short off here. It really ain't the city's problem that we're having to deal with. And you know, if when the last bids we done, we went over there, put a swell in, put red wrapping all in there. I remember that. Come to think of it.
Yeah. There's rip rap over there.
Huh?
There's rip rap over there.
Yeah, and we added more. Well, if you go up from that house up towards Highway eleven, uh, you will see every, almost every yard has, is terraced down through there. Like where it comes to that, that big bump.
Well, I just, I mean, I'm, I'm tired of spending money over where I want to fix.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a motion to table until our next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Alright, motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moves us into new business. First item is consideration of broadband-ready community ordinance.
Good evening. Um, so as we discussed in work session, um, the city of Social Circle is looking to become a broadband-ready community. Um, in June of two thousand and twenty-two, mayor and council adopted the comprehensive plan that is now in place for the city of Social Circle. Part of that comprehensive plan is becoming a broadband-ready community, um, in our short-term work plan. There are two major benefits for being designated broadband-ready community and that's marketing for the city to incentivize broadband providers. To expand into, inside the city limits and having an advantage on grant applications when it comes, uh, for broadband expansion and services. Uh, a broadband-ready ordinance is required to be adopted in order to apply to be a broadband-ready community. We use a model ordinance provided by the Department of Community Affairs. Uh, and the main intent of the ordinance is to create a streamlined and, uh, inexpensive permitting process for broadband providers. And staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
Any questions for Ashley?
Um, when you say broadband ready, does that mean we, like. Um, like our downtown area will get like internet service? Exactly what does this mean broadband ready?
This just makes it easier for broadband service providers to come in and, um, have a simpler permitting process. So, so we can't go over a hundred dollars on our fees for broadband service providers and they have a quicker kind of expedited permitting process. So it's just saying that we're friendly to broadband providers.
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't mean that anybody's coming.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all it does, this, this is a, um, a priority that's being driven by the state, particularly in rural areas. In order to, um, encour- encourage your, your big broadband providers to consider areas outside of, uh, areas with a lot of people.
Okay.
Right? All of this is saying, this was part of the comp plan. Uh, the, the DCA, when they were reviewing our comp plan, saw that one of the recommendations was to adopt the broadband-ready community ordinance. So they contacted us and they said, here's the ordinance you need to go out.
It was basically saying, we're, we're here, we're friendly.
We're here.
We're friendly.
Come look at us.
Yeah, come look at us.
Pretty much.
Okay, uh, entertain a motion to approve for my signature.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ashley. Uh, item number two, consideration of a resolution to extend the moratorium on accepting applications for rezoning for residential zoning classes until June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Give me time to read it, Steve. Alright, we got a motion from Steve, second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three is consideration of a resolution to extend the moratorium on accepting applications for business license. For title loan companies, payday loan companies and other similar practices until June thirty, twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Teresa, second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, item, item number four, consideration of a resolution to extend the moratorium on applications for building permits. For warehouses or distribution centers until June thirty, twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from Nathan. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, consideration of changes to the current parks policy.
Okay. So, based on some, um, recent happenings. Um, I recommend a minute, an amendment to the current city parks agreement to allow the following changes. The first would be to provide the authority to myself, the downtown director, to allow use of Friendship Park. By downtown businesses, clubs and organizations at a level three community event and waive the rental fee. Anything above a level three, which is over a hundred people, would have to follow the current rules set forth. And then the second would be to allow the city manager to approve in-kind services, improvements or maintenance done, um, to any city park in lieu of a rental fee. Um, the current park agreement does not address waiving the fee for the use of Friendship Park, um, by myself for downtown businesses. Clubs, organizations or events with less than a hundred people. Um, these events, um, drive foot traffic into downtown, um, and that benefits the downtown businesses and the community. And the current agreement also does not address the swap of services for use of facilities. And I recommend approval.
And Amber, the, um, some of the other parks do allow you that freedom, right?
Yes, they do, according to the, to the current, um, park, um, agreement. And I, I was under the assumption that, that I had that right, um, because I know in one of the drafts that we had done before, um, I did. Um, so I sort of just, I made a, a quick list of the community events that I've allowed to happen at Friendship Park. Um, just so, just for you guys' information. Um, so what we have, the Pollinator event that the Walton County Master Gardeners do. They come in and do a full day where they offer information about the Pollinator garden that's in the park and offer activities for kids and things like that. Um, Kiwanis has been having a Halloween celebration at the park for the last two years to kind of keep traffic downtown after downtown trick or treat. Um, we've done some pop-up events like the Nativity and Movie Night. Um, the library used the park for summer reading program activities. The art department at Georgia College, um, held two events there. Um, then the, we, the local pastors have done a Back the Blue event for the police department there each year.
So, um, you know, going to the second part of the question, your question further. Um, the policy does give, uh, the ability to waive fees. But only for certain groups and only in certain parks. Okay? So, um, in veterans parks, we have the ability to waive fees for school events. And for events that are sponsored by a veteran affiliated organization such as American Union and the F W L A's facility, okay? Um, in Berks Field, we only have, Berks Park, we only have the ability to waive fees for school events or churches. Um, the, what's really driving this is, uh, we had a request last week from a baseball team, travel baseball team that's not school-related. They're a travel baseball team. Who wanted to, um, use the parks on Thursday nights. Baseball field or Berks Field on Thursday nights. In exchange of waiving the fee, they would come in and do some maintenance on the field. They're talking about Brady Field and putting out some bases. Philosophically, great idea. Zero issues with it, okay? However, uh, as part of our parks discussion last year, we specifically had a discussion about the archery group over in Veterans Park. And saying we did not waive the fee over there, we changed for the work that they were doing. Okay? So it's apples and apples. Here, just different sporting event. You've got bow and arrows versus baseball bats. So, based on that and based on a strict rigging of the policy that you guys adopted last year. It was determined that we do not have the ability to, um, waive permanent fees. Um, in exchange for harder new services. And, you know, the baseball park is, is there for that. I mean, they were told that they could show up. First come, first served. They had that right. But they wanted to guarantee that, um, that they had the time blocked and they had to go permit. Um, I mean, they showed up and somebody was walking their dog on the park, they couldn't ask the person walking their dog to leave. Because first come, first served. Right? And I don't, I don't think that, that either of the two situations we've had recently, um, between this and downtown business, um. You know, wanting to have an event to create some environment in the park, you know, during the middle of the week. I don't think, think either one of these, um, are problems. And I don't think that they were necessarily the intent of the policy. Right? But there are casualties of. Well, without, for lack of a better phrase.
Let me ask you this. If we do this, the baseball team is that gonna fix it to where the archery team probably want to use there as part of community?
The policy is, the policy change is, is that the city manager has the right to waive fees for any park in exchange for. Um.
Maintenance and improvements.
So it would apply for Veterans Park, it would apply if somebody wants to use the post office park. Right? Don't know what for, but it did.
The only thing I got concerns about the downtown part, it says over three, three hundred, I mean, a hundred people, right? So anything over a hundred people. Still charge.
Anything over a hundred people would go back to the agreement that's set forth now.
So I think we should probably take that part out just for the negativity scene. It's gonna be more than a hundred people. The downtown trick or treat.
But I still, it's a Main Street event now. And, and still, still by you guys giving me that authority. There, there still may be events that are less than a hundred people that, that weren't having the fee paid.
No, that's what I'm saying from, because if we're, we're limited to a hundred and they got more than a hundred people.
So you're saying to make the policy wide broader where you have more discretion even.
On that, that number because, I mean, we were saying a hundred.
I, I hear what you're saying. Um, but at the same time, you gotta find some common sense, right? I mean, we're not gonna be out there counting heads and. You find out you have a hundred and three people there and say, oh, sorry, if you three people got a leak, he's, well, we're gonna charge it the fee, right? You're not gonna do that either.
And I didn't feel like the downtown businesses, I mean, just in talking with them and knowing the things that they've asked to use the park for before. Have never had events over a hundred people. I mean, so it's, it's normally just small things that they would use the park as overflow for or, or something like that. Um, like with critters using it for cornhole. They don't have over a hundred people. So I'm comfortable with, with that. I don't think that any of them are gonna come and say, hey, we wanna have a, you know, this and it's gonna be over a hundred people. Well, if you do, then we're gonna go back to the original agreement and.
But to your, but to your point, I mean, a hundred's not the right number.
I'm just.
We can always add it to here.
If you get to a hundred people, over a hundred people and you got that many cars down there. Then you gonna get back to the same, you gonna get back to shutting folks down that ain't gonna be able to operate.
Perhaps.
Unless it's on a Sunday morning or something like that.
So, I mean, I, I think Amber's come up with some, you know, two good changes that I think will accomplish what it is we're seeking to accomplish here. And the recommendation is to go in that direction.
Just, just for clarity, the, um. Uh, the first point of that, to provide authority to the downtown director for Friendship Park for businesses, clubs and organizations. Do you have the authority to do that at all the other parks? Or no?
Well, no, it's like you're.
Clubs and organizations.
It's just, because I know we said the veterans was certain groups and so is Berks.
This doesn't, this doesn't change the stip, uh, the conditions for the other parks. What this does is it adds basically conditions where you're able to waive it for Friendship Park.
So what it, what it basically does is it fixes it where if they gonna do maintenance on Berks Field. Then they got, they gonna have their time allotted that they wanna use it. And if the archery crowd at base wants to use Veterans Park and they gonna do the maintenance down there like they were doing. Then they gonna have the certain dates that they wanna use it blocked off for them to use.
Yeah. I, I, I would add also, if we're gonna do this. Um, I think, I think that we need to add something to the parks policy that. Um, a stipulation that in-kind improvements have to be done to city standards.
Okay.
Right? So you can't just have guys show up and say, um, well, we did this, sorry you don't like it, we did it.
Yeah.
Having, they have the city's approval.
Yes.
Right.
Jay, have you, have you had an opportunity to review this?
Yes, I've been talking with Amber and Eric about this and I agree that, uh, you're not so concerned about this routine lawn maintenance or stuff and dirt on the baseball field. But you wanna be careful of doing anything more, uh, expertise driven than that. Because the city needs to sign up for it because it's on city property, city.
I believe. Do we need to table this and have some time to write that into the agreement or are we ready to go?
I think if they can come up with a word, then they're we good to go.
So my concern is another thing that we took money from, um, critters.
What do you refund it?
I think we need to give them their money back. They were just casually of us not having to.
I was hoping, I was planning on doing it anyway.
Yeah, we was just, we're just, you know, they're not having, us not having it how we supposed to have it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I. They didn't do anything malicious.
No.
They're, they're doing it with all good intent. They don't need to be kind of honest.
Oh, I didn't realize they had paid money.
Yeah.
It was fifty dollars per hour, fifty dollars per night.
Okay.
Time set at nights. And they're, they're not doing this really to make a lot of money.
No, just trying.
I mean, they're, they're part of the league. And so they gotta pay league fees to the Cornhole Association, whatever that is.
Yep.
But there's a lot of people that play in cornhole down there that ain't just eating critters. They play cornhole, but they eating in other places.
Yeah.
So it's not just helping critters, it's helping everybody down there.
Yeah.
And that's the reason she only has the authority to waive Friendship Park because the renovating event there is gonna help all the.
Downtown.
So, we're ready for a motion?
All right, I'll make the motion to, um, uh, change the, uh, recommended amendments to the city parks agreement.
And can we stay in the motion to refund critters? Or do we need to make a motion to refund?
Possibly.
We'll do it. Okay. Second. Okay. Motion from Nathan, second from Steve and Tyson's. Take your pick on that one. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Amber. All right. Leads us to the big event for the evening, budget presentation.
It's, uh, always the best part of the evening.
Mr. Taylor, it's all yours.
Yeah, and so what we'll do here, uh, we'll do like we did last year, we'll take same approach. Um, the intent tonight is to just kind of give guys a high level of review of what we're gonna be talking about this year. Um, not really looking for any kind of discussion tonight, just kind of start laying it out. See it up for discussion for, um, I think it's probably the next work session when we talk about it. Okay? So Jennifer's been working very hard around this.
Tirelessly.
Tirelessly, even up until late this afternoon, still making changes. So I think her hard work and she also put together this presentation and, um, since she's so involved with it, I thought that she should give it.
Thank you. So hopefully I'll be able to move along pretty quickly. Um, the purpose of this budget is to accomplish strategic priorities for the mayor and city council for the fiscal year 2022, 2024. Um, consider work plan to focus on infrastructure rehabilitation while planning for future growth. Invest in infrastructure and city utility service locations. Um, address concerns and service needs of the community, city boards and commissions. I thought it was yours that was, I thought it was, um, in comments?
I'm glad enough y'all can't hear me. Okay, sorry. Um, provide city, uh, provide current city services effectively, efficiently and professionally. Okay. So, as you're gonna see, several of our funds have increased some. Um, general fund is up five point nine percent. Um, that is due to doing some big projects in the general fund. Um, those projects include, um, a fifty thousand dollar budget for the city clerk in contractual services for the record system and digitizing city records. Um, two hundred thousand for drainage projects and some funding, um, and there's some funding for that in SPOSS as well. Two hundred and fifty for infrastructure paving needs. Fifty one thousand for Vermeer Diesel Chipper, which is a stationary unit. Um, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand for GMA leases for the grapple truck and leaf vacuum truck, which those were approved last year. Um, but some of those leases won't take effect until late this year. Um, twenty twenty, uh, two hu, twenty-two thousand for sidewalks and street indexing. So that's part of what you see in that five point nine percent increase. In water fund, we have a fifty-two percent increase. Um, that seems like a lot, but those are Jifa projects. Um, mostly related to the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment facilities. So those have a revenue source as well from Jifa that will then be paid out, um, in future years. Um, in the gas fund, you see a negative three point eight percent. That is due to, um, our quotes that we received from M, MGAG. All of our gas prices are going down. This has been a very high year for us and those are declining now. We still will have rev, more than enough revenue to make up for the cost of the sale of gas. But, um, that's why it appears to be declining. Um, solid waste fund is, uh, sixteen point nine percent. That's normal growth within the solid waste fund. Um, confiscations is, I mean, that's just purchase of a vehicle. SPOSS looks ridiculously high, but that is because a lot of our SPOSS projects are, have been pushed until these last couple of years of the SPOSS funding. So, um, we have already received more than what was anticipated for SPOSS. And, um, some of what you see budgeted here is us using fund balance from prior years for those SPOSS projects that are upcoming.
General, um, what's the effective date of our SPOSS?
It's two thousand nineteen SPOSS.
Correct. And it ends in twenty.
Six years, twenty-five.
It ends in, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six.
And so, so one of the, uh, you know, three point eight million dollars on SPOSS, uh, one of those is one project. I mean, a lot of that's one project. It's, it's.
One point one five.
I got what, uh, one point six million, I think, or one point two million for water filters out of the beat. Water plant. So that's a good chunk of that amount.
Um, at this time, we're not anticipating a mill rate increase. Um, so it's gonna stay at seven point nine. Um, tax digest growth of about eleven percent is projected, um, for growth and reassessments. Um, our recommendation from the tax digest is nine point five, but we were so modest with our approach last year and received more in that we're able to increase our anticipated by eleven percent this year. And we're still being modest with what we budgeted versus what the digest said. Um, sales tax receipts are projected to remain at current levels. Pilot from utility funds support lower millage rates. Um, and our pilots have went down this year. Um, general fund balance is near target levels. No use of fund balance prove, projected. And, um, support of general fund capital projects to the fullest of its potential. Um, I don't know if y'all can read those. They're kind of tiny. And I don't know if you want me to go over percentage or not. Y'all tell me which y'all would prefer. But these are some diagrams just showing where the general fund revenues and expenses are by department and type. I'll give y'all a second to look at it.
Can we get the sentence? Bill's here. Yeah. Okay. It's, it's essentially the same as what this budget here. There's not a lot. Overall, general fund's only up five percent this year. So, um, essentially the same.
Correct. All right. So moving to water and sewer fund, um, the revenue forecast continues to be adjusted to reflect annual collections. Um, revenues reflect the CDBG grant of one million dollars. Um, and then our rate increase recommendations are going to remain for this year at two point five, um, to continue investment in infrastructure improvements.
Are we gonna spend the two, two million in water sewer?
The two million in water sewer, what do you mean?
We were doing those two million dollar projects each year.
Um, I believe it's gonna be more than that. He's talking about the Jifa.
I'm talking about the Jifa stuff.
Yeah, it's more than that.
Most, most of your water sewer fund expenses are Jifa projects.
It's about eight million dollars worth of Jifa just this year.
Yeah. So you catching up for what we didn't spend last year?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
But.
And, and they're, and they're all projects that council's been talking about for, for a couple of years. And one thing that Jennifer said a while ago that I really wanted to emphasize, um, our budget for our current fiscal year went up pretty significantly. Um, because we had a lot of, of things that we needed to do. Right? We had a lot of infrastructure that we needed to do. Uh, huge impact of this year's budget was, um, salary study and reset, resetting of our salaries. Um, and in order to balance that budget for this year, we had to, uh, overly rely, in my opinion, on utility fund transfers. Um, this budget, um, is not relying on those utility transfers as much. Um, the, you know, the utility transfers are going down so that we can start rebuilding some of those fund balances back in those funds. And I will say, um, you know, we are proposing this, you know, two point five percent rate increase. Um, as, as been discussed. But I will also say, uh, there's gonna be a conversation we're gonna have to have probably during this budget where, um, there was, you know, assumptions that were made four years ago when council decided to go two, two and a half percent every year. That was based on expenses for projects.
At that, for you at that time.
At that time. Right?
And they are significantly higher.
Give you a good example, you know, we've been talking about, uh, uh, you know, sewer plant. You know, last year we went and got a, uh, tried to get a grant from the state for twenty-three million for a, um, three point zero, uh, mill gallons per day sewer treatment plant. And that's twenty-three million. I got new numbers on Thursday, it was sixty-seven million.
Oh, wow.
That's what you're seeing in these projects that we're having to do. So, we're not gonna have the conversation right now about the rates. We are doing a, uh, a rate study right now. And we have a lot of unknowns that we're trying to figure out right now. We need to go ahead and balance the budget at two point five percent. But at some point in the very near future, we're gonna have to have that conversation. It's gonna have to be a very frank conversation.
And that two point five percent came from the increase that you had?
It came from the projected numbers at the last rate study that was done four years ago, I think. I, I think we updated again in twenty nineteen. So, yeah, that's been four years ago.
So that two, two point five is compounded every year, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, yes, two point five compounded every year. Um, so, yeah, so you do have that effect. But again, all that was based on, you know, projected costs of, of expenses that.
I think last year, a normal household ended like a dollar ninety-seven cent.
That was for three thousand, three thousand minimum, I think, is what they used for normal.
Yeah.
Correct. And in, in the next couple of slides, we'll go over that more. Um, three thousand is no longer your average household. Five thousand is now the average in city of social circle. I ran a report the other day. And about five thousand two hundred and some odd changes about what the average household is in social circle for residential, correct? Mm-hmm. Um, these are similar to the general fund ones that y'all saw. Again, if you have any questions. So this is what we were just talking about, the two point five water and sewer rate increase, um, that supports the infrastructure investments. Um, like Eric said, that will change in future years. Um, it captures saving and operational costs to reduce future rate increases. So, um, this will change our rates for inside city. It's gonna change the outside rates too, but this is what y'all are mostly focused on. Um, for the, um, meter fee, it's a dollar sixty-eight right now. It will change to, um, a dollar seventy-two. And for every thousand gallons, it's currently ten dollars seventy-seven cents. So that will be eleven dollars and four cents per thousand gallons. So, um, like I just said, our average customer's five thousand. So their water use would go from fifty-five to, fifty-five, fifty-three to fifty-six ninety-two. Like a dollar forty difference. And then, um, our current sewer rates are ten dollars and eighteen cents and they will go up to ten dollars and forty-four cents per thousand gallons and that follows water usage. Um, and for the average customer, their bill would go from fifty dollars and ninety cents to fifty-two twenty. Dollar and thirty cents, right? And then, so if you combine all of that, the average water and sewer customer, their bill would increase from one oh six forty-three to one oh nine twelve. So if they have those services, it will be.
And we basically add about a million dollars, a little over, a little over two dollars, almost three.
Right.
Instead of the one point nine.
Each month?
Each month. A dollar ninety, one point nine. So we add three dollars instead of one point nine into two point five.
Right. Because as the numbers grow, the two point five percent increases as well. Mm-hmm. If I can get to the next page. Okay. Good news for gas fund, we have no rate changes at this time. Um, while we are still the lowest in the region, um, industrial gas usage is steady and gradually increasing. Um, I would probably look at increasing the rates to keep us competitive in the future, but not this year. Another pretty chart. Y'all have any questions about that one? Okay. Thanks. So, um, for our solid waste rates, um, per our contract, we're supposed to increase each year by three point five percent for the curbside refuse and recycling rates. Um, recycling is included for free. I don't know why I put that part. Um, so that would change our monthly bill from, um, for a normal trash bin for eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents to nineteen forty. And senior rates would go from sixteen ninety to seventeen forty-nine.
Here, did you, did you ever hear anything from twice mad about the recycle?
Nope.
You did?
I think I saw Eric do it. I was in Cudahoula the other day and one guy in a truck, myself, with the arm, he gets lost trash can, gets over to the back and throws in their boat. One guy in a truck.
We could have continued bulk service, but remember it was like eight dollars more a month than it was voted against.
So I, I think, I think we're gonna have some possible solutions to that in the future once we get this crap in the truck. I don't wanna make any commitments at the moment, but, uh, that certainly gives us more options.
Right. And, um, I, I know what you're saying. I've witnessed that myself. And we do have a great trash guy. Um, Matt puts his heart and soul into what he does. He cares a lot. He calls us every day and checks before he leaves. I think it's just training.
And honestly, I've, I've seen that happen here too. It's not something that they advertise that they've done.
Yeah, I've just.
I've seen it here too.
They still picking up stuff.
Yeah, and I was, I just think, you know, when we looked at those numbers, you know, that the numbers for bulk were so outrageous that automatically we said no.
Mm-hmm.
And that could be that they really didn't wanna do it. So if you make the numbers high, it will work a wild door.
They would have to continue to have two people in the truck. The only reason why they have a second person right now is because they're supposed to be putting tags on trash bins that are not turned in the proper direction. So that second.
Video on how to turn them, because I still see.
Yeah, we, we, we talked to them about that. We talked to them about that. They opted, best solution to be, to deal with each situation on case-by-case basis.
Um, have they taken any consideration? Cause I had a, uh, resident ask me about like holidays when, you know, you know they're gonna be more.
Trash.
Trash. You know, in that instance.
We, we haven't had that, that, that conversation specifically with them. But, I mean, it's, it's pretty common in the industry. Uh, they, they get slammed all over the world, actually, um, on, on those particular days. So I'm sure it's built into the rates.
Right. Will they, I mean, will they pick up that extra? Cause right now they don't.
I mean, we can have the conversation a little at the time.
Oh.
But I'm sure, I'm sure the answer's gonna be no.
They've been picking up the excess.
But they do.
They have?
Yeah.
In some places.
In some places.
I'm sure, I'm sure the answer's gonna be no.
Some places, they, but they probably do.
So an explanation on that is sometimes, um, during those big holidays, they bring two trucks to the area, one of which is our sidearm truck and one of which is not. So when they bring that second truck and they have that ability, they do the courteous thing and they pick up that trash and it's not fair to the citizens that aren't getting that same service. But they're, they're trying to extend courtesy and do above and beyond what the scope for a contract is. And in turn, they're shooting themselves in the foot because they should just leave it. They should treat every customer the same. We've had that talk with them. Um, are we ready to move on? Or, okay. So, um, for the general fund city employ, or for the general city employee provisions, um, the three new positions that are being added this year, they highways and street superintendent. Um, and then a street crew worker, um, so that there can be, Eric can probably explain that better. And then a wastewater plant operator too.
Let me show that session, some of the point. Not tonight.
And then, um, and then, um, to reclass a wastewater plant superintendent to supervise all water and sewer departments. Um, the cost of living increase that's included is a three percent to maintain market competitiveness and the merit increase of two percent, um, for employees that are meeting and exceeding expectations. There's no changes in the health benefits. Our benefit dollars absorb any changes. And then I believe our last slide is just telling y'all what the next steps are, what's coming up. Um, on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, we'll have the, that's today. Um, I proposed the budget to you all, I'm sorry. And then, um, May fourth, twenty twenty-three, we'll have another council budget work session. Um, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, we'll do, um, the first public hearing on the operating budget and the mill, millage rate. And then June first, the second hearing, and then June twenty. And then June first, the second hearing, and then June twentieth, hopefully the adoption. Okay. Okay. That wasn't, I'm sorry, I printed off what I had prepared.
So on the next steps, our plan is, I guess it might just be a general overview. Um, I, I think we had a pretty successful process last year where we did this on the first night, and then following sessions, we brought in each of the departments to dig a little bit deeper. Okay, and I'm gonna recommend we do the same. Um, we do have one small hiccup though that I think we need to consider. Um, and we had this problem last year. The five of you have graciously, um, appointed me, uh, to be the voting delegate for the gas authority. And, uh, May fourth is their conference. So we had that issue last year where we had to reschedule that because I had a good gas authority conference. And so what I would propose is we actually look at moving the normally scheduled work session on May the fourth to either May first or maybe a date following week. Unless you guys wanna talk about the budget without me?
No, can we do it, you know, follow up week, because mine had a version May second, and I think I'm already booked out of here.
I'll look at some dates.
I just see that.
I mean, if that's something you guys are open to, uh, Susan and I will look at some dates tomorrow, she'll mount to you.
Please.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any specific budget questions? If you think of anything, you can email me.
So, so biggest challenge I'll, I'll kinda leave with you guys with, we're in an era of decreasing revenues. I mean, obviously, you know, you know, but lost, you know, we have just lost. Um, we end up, bas- basically proposing a, basically a flat budget for that because, um, you do have a natural eight to nine percent growth every year in that even without the different changes of, we're, we only have two months of history under the current, so we're closing a flat on that. Um, you know, we're not proposing any kind of tax increase or anything like that, but at the same time, you know, we are in, in an era where costs of doing business and everything's going up. Right? And especially with a lot of infrastructure projects, one, one of the, one of the priorities that I have had this year was to start getting our arms around some of the repaving needs to be done around here. Uh, just, just, um, historically, in the last few years, I don't know how far it goes back, really the only repaving we've been doing has been the loaning funds. And that doesn't get you very far, and we need to start budgeting a little bit more, and I hope to do a little bit more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars this year. But it is what it is.
We just do a lot of patches, not done a lot of resurfacing.
Yeah, but at some point, you guys start resurfacing.
So we need to, we need to do it at a, at a rate, when you have a truck here, it costs you less when they're sitting here. So we have to look at it better that way, when we get somebody here.
Right.
We're gonna get a better rate, let's go in and do more than just a side street.
Well, and one of the things that we're also, um, trying to do now is, uh, particularly on some of, some of these like sewer projects, is building in the cost of repaving as part of those projects. Right? So to be able to pay for the repaving of our large sewer fund, right, if you got tear up the road, you know, versus paying for it at general fund. So, um, so there, you know, there are a lot of barriers, you know, but we, we, we got the, um, you know, the document scanning that, that we talked about on our board. Um, it's not taking us very far because you gotta spend the first thirty thousand dollars on the software to put on your website for the public to be able to look at what you scanned. Right? Laser fish. So, we'll talk about all this stuff a little bit, a little bit deeper, um, in the future.
Also, um, I would like to see something in the budget for the youth. Um, I know I had mentioned to Eric about, um, Bishop Davenport wanting to partner with us with parks. Um, there is a basketball court located over where I live off of Old Drive that's like been abandoned, so he is willing to partner with us to like re, rehab that, that area. And he also has an area over there by his church off of Highway eleven that would be in your district, see? So I would like to see something in the budget for, for that.
Yeah, um, I haven't had a chance to follow up with him on since you and I talked. Um, you know, there may be some things we can do with that that are flash neutral. Do we do a lease for that, or how do we? I haven't really talked to him about it, so I don't wanna say anything. I've got ideas.
Exactly what it works.
All right, any more discussion on the budget? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank y'all.
I don't know. Thank you to the folks sitting over here for.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks, thanks.
The W D.
Directors, department heads, everyone, thank you for what you do all the time.
Thank you.
Are we doing this to clean up, you know, to clean up and then using the dumpster? I seen on Facebook, you got elderly people that want to get stuff in the dumpsters, but we don't have a way to get it to them. I mean, can we do, I mean.
I think I have to come, have to come through a non-profit or a church, because then we'd be providing service to.
You got me with some stuff.
I just, I just seen it, I'm, I'm wondering what's on Facebook, I seen it on Facebook.
I was gonna say, if you know somebody that wants something thrown in there, and they ain't got a way to get it there, if you'll let me know, I'll try to go pick it up and take it out.
Because I did last year, I throwed some stuff in the ground in there, which was fine, but I just want, I just seen it on Facebook.
I got, I got surprised, so.
Well, I've got an idea, I'll talk to Amber about it. Um, I don't wanna say that loud.
You're gonna throw it away by the bus.
Yeah, I see, I'll, I'll look, I'll help you through all that.
I feel like it would be a great small business center for a young gentleman or a couple gentlemen to give business lessons and charge people to also offer them. Have found any young gentlemen interested?
There's too much work involved, they will do that.
They're gonna be a little video game.
Yeah, there are a couple out there. There's, there's gotta be some.
All right, thanks again to all of you for what you do. Uh, don't know with executive session, so I'll entertain a motion for your. Second. Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.